He's driving up right behind me.
You know he was coming?
I didn't know he was coming.
Change it all curse words, you'll remember it. If you change it all curse words, you'll remember it.
Mr. Henshaw says we're good to go. Good evening, everyone. It is six oh one on September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. Time to call this meeting of the Gallatin City Council to order. Going to ask that you stand with me so that we may begin this meeting as we do each. Councilman Alexander is going to offer them vacation and Vice Mayor Fennell is going to lead us in the pledge.
In every heart pray. Turn of worship God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for another day's journey. We pray of God that I was blessed to refuse all of this land and country, those who have no home, no place to call home, no place to lay their head. A prayer of God that you continue to bless the city of Gallatin, firefighters, a police officer who protect us and all of our department heads. The Lord, I pray that everything we say and do tonight will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, in every heart said, amen.
Congratulations to the father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ketchel, if you'd call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell. Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Really nice to have everyone here tonight after a few challenging weeks, so thank you all. There are no minutes provided this evening, so we're going to move on down to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can speak to any item that is on the agenda. There are no public hearings this evening, so if there's something on the agenda that you would like to speak to, now would be your time. If it's not on the agenda and you have a concern, you will have time at the end of the meeting to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. So we ask that you come forward, introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and you will have five minutes to address the council. Public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. And I arrive tonight on number five, the second reading of the ordinance, buying a roll-off truck for recycling. According to the specifications that has been specified by our lead man back here, I disagree with the specs on the vehicle. I think it is not going to be efficient enough for our operation. And I want my voice to be heard with regard to that issue. The way that our leader, with regard to that, our department head, has set this truck up is what we used to do in the good old days. That's fine and dandy for the good old days, but it's not designed for what we're doing today. Now, you're going to vote and that's fine. I agree, we need to have the truck. There's no question about that. But I do have a problem with regard to how it's put together. So with that in mind, Mayor, thank you. By the way, congratulations, Mayor. You done good.
Well, thank you. What, I'm really curious as to what you think should be different about this truck.
All right.
I don't typically ask questions during public recognition, but that's kind of a broad statement to put out there without... Or do you want to go offline with Mr. DePreece? He'd probably appreciate that.
Well, Mr. DePreece knows where I stand on the issue. And that's fine and dandy, as far as that's concerned. He's done his due diligence. He thinks that's the way it should be done. That's fine and dandy. But my point is that things have changed in the trucking industry over the last ten years. And what you need to do is not have more pieces of equipment as far as gears and stuff running, you need to have less. That way you have less drag, be better fuel mileage, the whole nine yards. So that's why I say what I say when I say it. So you're going to do what you want to do. That's fine and dandy. It's going to be a fine truck. There's no question about that. But it's the old style. It's going to cost you more money to run it. More fuel mileage will not be as good because you're running back from Nashville when you bring your, drop your cans off or whatever, you're going to be empty. You don't need to have all those wheels on the ground when you're running empty. You just need what you need actually on the ground, so...
I remember you describing that previously.
Okay. So thank you very much for your time, folks. And I tried to get you, but you weren't right.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items this evening?
Good evening. Pascal Jovance, one three three five Long Island Park. Thank you for having us tonight. And I would like to comment on item number one, the new townhouse project. When I came in front of you, there were plenty of questions asked about traffic and about TCA and all that stuff. And a comment was made, hey, we have time, that's going to have to go to public comment, first reading, second reading. Now, a second reading, we still don't have any answers. Mayor, you had the right question, but we still don't have answers. Answers we had were, oh, that's going to, we're going to have less traffic. You know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not that smart, but you had more cars, less traffic, that doesn't look good. So that would be nice to have answers. And again, we in front of a case where what was brought to you was, I can still build that, I'm just going to rent. But we all know that they don't want to rent, they want to sell. So again, we're in front of people who bring development, where we have no answers on what's going to happen on that, on that door. And I don't think it's a good spot to bring more townhouses and who's going to lock us in, being able to expand our root system there. And again, where are the answers we're expecting? So move forward, yes, but why don't we have answers? Thank you.
Mr. Jovance. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Hey, seeing no one indicating that they do, I'm going to declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Moving now to Mayor's comments. Oops, that was Mr. DeBoer's timer. We got through public comment pretty quickly. I want to, I need to start with some sad news for you all this evening. I wanted you to know about the passing of James Whitehurst. He was a golf course employee for thirty-two years and has passed away. His service is tomorrow. So I would ask that you keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. That's a long time with the city and a big loss, so I wanted to share that with you. Moving on to an informational item, I certainly want to thank the public and thank the downtown merchants for their patience as we address those crosswalks in downtown Gallatin. I know it's going to be painful as we get those improvements done, but I think they will be worth it in the long run, both for those who drive through the square and those who walk across the square. But just bear with us as we get those done. We will try and keep social media updated with when the closures will be so that you will be aware of that. Finally, I'm sorry, I want to mention that, well, since Friday, I have been at the Tennessee Municipal League Conference in Chattanooga. And just a couple of things I want you to know about it. First of all, I was very pleased that we had so many city employees attend and that we had four council members able to attend this year. So thank you, Councilman Overton, Councilman George, Councilman Alexander, and Councilman Fann for attending. Certainly want to congratulate Ms. George. She completed her Elected Officials Academy number two, which is pretty good timing for the length of time you've been in office, so appreciate you doing that. Really want to give a big shout out to our Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Brown asked me, of course, who had the best-looking booth there, but I can tell you honestly, Gallatin Parks and Recreation had the best-looking booth at the conference. And I think they probably got about the most attention. The staff from the department worked at that booth constantly. They were very generous with their information. The enthusiasm did not wane for a bit. And there were people like spending an hour at their booth, talking to them, learning about what they had done with the Miracle Park. And so I want to thank them and congratulate them. Also want to carry that on into saying that, you know, what they did was such a big deal. But while I was there and the people that I met over the weekend, I felt like everywhere I turned, I had some compliment about some city department head. There, it just made me feel so good that our professionals are so highly regarded throughout the state. It was, it was, I felt like I was living in a dream because people were constantly telling me, oh, we appreciate so-and-so so very much, and they've helped us with this, and they do a great job with this, and we really admire what you've done here. And it just really made me feel good. I wish you all could have had that same experience. I'm sure that some of you did that were there, but they would look at my tag and see I was from Gallatin. They'd be like, oh, we know such-and-such. And it was, it was just really exciting. So that's certainly a thank you and a congratulations to the rest of our departments here in the city. It's a good reminder of how fabulous they truly are. And that is all I have for Mayor's comments this evening. So we're going to move on to the regular agenda, but we do have one item that we need to deal with. Need your guidance on that. When we had the work session last, we said that we were going to move option two on the redistricting onto council. It did not get on this week's agenda. It's not on this week's agenda. You could make the decision to discuss it if you like. Ms. Hamacali and I are in agreement that we should not be voting on it since it wasn't on the agenda. Furthermore, Ms. Smiley has provided you with maps and information. Have you put the map there yet? Okay. Yeah, she has provided you with maps and all the data, actually more data sets than you requested, but lots of data sets for you to look at. And after seeing what she showed me this afternoon, I think it might be a good idea for you to study those and see if that changes your opinions because we were planning on discussing it again next week at the work session anyway. But it's certainly your pleasure how we proceed. And I apologize that it wasn't on the agenda.
I would too. And Lori, thank you for putting this together with the comparisons to how things are right now for each one.
I think it's really good information and a really good lens to look at it through.
And if anybody's got any questions, call her because she's very helpful at explaining what she put together. That way you'll be versed by next Tuesday.
And just a reminder that I think you have five options out of probably three hundred that you tried because they just couldn't make some things work, you know. But anyway, we can discuss it next week at the work session if everyone's okay with that. And again, I apologize that it was not on this agenda. My bad. Oh, I do need to go back to some events. Is that okay? We hadn't started the agenda yet. Couple of events I want you to know about. The Monarch in the Park, which is Union Elementary's Butterfly Festival Celebration. They're doing it again this year. It's going to happen Friday. It's at nine AM at the Triple Creek Park Pavilion. There's a Sumner County Veterans Rally this year. It's happening at the Veterans Park. It's from nine AM until four PM. It's the Saturday. I think you would enjoy going out there and participating in that. Also, the city of Gallatin and some very awesome sponsors are presenting Pawpaloosa again this year at Triple Creek Pavilion. If you want somewhere to make you smile, if you love animals, that's the place to go. That's from ten AM till two on Saturday. This Thursday, next Thursday night, I'm sorry, is the Sumner County Council of Governments Awards Dinner. That's at the Southern Occasions Event Center in Portland. I think most of you have either registered or declined to attend. And give you an early warning that next Saturday, the second, is when our Main Street Festival happens. I can't believe it's already here. And then, of course, that night is when we have the candlelight cemetery tour. And then the next day is Councilwoman George's birthday. Finally, I want everyone to prepare and sign up to participate in the Homer Bradley Motorcycle Ride because that is happening on the ninth of October. It happens on the Saturday. It's an absolutely amazing ride. Motorcycle riders tell me, I don't know from my own experience. And they do a really nice event, starting up here on the square and finishing over at the park. And this raises money for the Sumner County Food Bank each year. And Mr. Bradley's been doing it for a lot of years, and he has raised, what's the figure, Ms. Love, do you know? I know it's well over a hundred thousand dollars at this point.
It's over two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, my goodness.
Wait, what? Three hundred thousand?
Over three hundred thousand. Whoa.
I bet we could find a motorcycle for you to ride on there if you wanted to.
You don't want me driving it, that's for certain. So I'd encourage you to get registered for that. You can do that through the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce. So that's the events I wanted to share with you this evening. And now we will move on to item number one on the agenda, which is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero seven dash forty-four. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading on the order of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee. Rezone of thirty-one point one plus or minus acre partial from Commercial Service District to the Multiple Residential and Office District with a preliminary master development plan for Walnut Crest Townhomes located northeast of the intersection of Long Hollow Pike and State Route one oh nine, zone twenty twenty-one dash zero zero four six. Authorizing the vision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinance providing for survivability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander. Second, my Councilman Overton opening the floor for discussion.
When this was first brought up, it was, we were deferring it until we heard more from the state, and I don't know what happened with that, but I still feel like it should be deferred until we knew what the state had decided, and so my vote would be no.
I asked that we pause on that until we had more information. I really wish I knew kind of the history on it because I'm fairly certain that that property was impacted when one oh nine went through there. I'm sure that the property was likely compensated because of the development ability, the ability to develop was likely taken away to a large degree. And I just, I mean, I want something to be able to happen there if it's not something that's going to make that road better. But I'd like, unlike you, I'd like to wait and see what TDOT's ideas are for improving that whole thoroughfare. But it paused for about two weeks, I think, and then it was back with us. And so, and you all voted to move it along, and so now we are at second reading, but I've said my piece.
I mean, I don't have a problem if some of you all still want to wait. I can withdraw my motion if it's, I don't have a problem with it.
How long are we going to wait? Has anybody checked with the state or anything like that? I mean...
Mr. Tuttle's been in consistent conversation with them. I don't know if you have an update or if you have any good guess on what a timeline is we might be looking at. And I do acknowledge that the developer has been very generous in saying that, of course, they work with the city. But I just hate having something else on the books that won't be unattainable if this road happens.
We can hear from the representative from the developer if they're here. I think Andy's here.
Well, I'm, my question would be for Mr. Tuttle.
Okay.
If he has, I mean, you guys can certainly hear from whomever you wish, but I was wondering if Nick had some kind of forecast.
Nick Tuttle, city engineer. I did, we received a draft plan about two months ago. And right around a month ago, we, we had a long discussion with several members of the Strategic Planning Office with TDOT, and there were some other offices that, the ones that are developing this feasibility study about really this corridor. And we shared with them our opinions, our thoughts. The draft plan that was submitted to us or that we received to review, they said, was already vastly different after other conversations that they've had with Senator Farrell Hale and some others. And so there's still really a lot of moving parts. I did send an email out, I don't remember if that was yesterday or, it'd been, so, sent something out just really summarizing our, not about Walnut Crest, but summarizing our concerns about the draft plan that they had created, just to make sure that we had it on record, that they had that information, even though we'd already had, you know, some conversations, just to be sure we were clear. And so I have not gotten a response or any kind of feedback. I don't know if they've got, you know, further draft that they want to share with us. Don't know how it'll impact this piece of property or if it'll impact it at all. But, and I don't have a timeline either. It seemed like that they, they didn't want to confine themselves when we had the discussion probably about three or four weeks ago to a timeline. But yeah, I'm not giving you, giving you too much to work with at this point in time.
Well, I did think that just getting a draft from them when we got one was actually pretty good progress.
Yes.
I was surprised we got it as soon as we did. And our county community development infrastructure committee has met with people from TDOT as well, and they do, they totally get that this, this plan is really, really important, even though it's not got plans for funding yet. To go ahead and identify what it might be is very meaningful for long-term viability throughout our community.
Yeah, I think that means that they're going to make sure they take their time to get it right. And they've been working on it since February of this year, and I've only seen one draft at this point in time. And they realized that there were some, some concerns that were created with that draft. So they're, they, they realize the sensitivity of this area and the pressures of development and, and just really the traffic that we're already dealing with, not, not to mention the stuff that we expect to happen in the next twenty-five years, which, you know, Gallatin's doubled in size in the past twenty-five years. So we could, not that we're expecting another double in population, but we can certainly expect a lot more traffic to be moving along this corridor.
Thank you for saying that. The double in population in the next twenty-five years.
It has.
No, I mean in the next, not that it's going to in the next, thank you for saying that.
I'm not pushing for that.
No, that was all. Any questions for Mr. Tuttle, you guys? Anyone, any further discussion with you all or...
I'll share that the developer did submit an updated traffic impact study to us last week. It's not something that we've been through and thoroughly reviewed yet. That is something that we're working on right now. So if you want to put this on the work session agenda, we might have some feedback on that, but we won't have, I'm not optimistic to have TDOT's, you know, updated study or anything like that at this point in time.
Well, this is on the preliminary master development plan too, so...
What about the timeline from the developer to TDOT? Is that, if the development starts doing their part before the, I mean, is there a way that TDOT can get their work done prior to the developer doing their part?
I don't see that as being a likely possibility. What I would anticipate is the work that TDOT would show in this study, that there would be a need for some area to be reserved and not be built on so that if TDOT does move a project like this forward, depending upon what they do, I mean, they could break it into multiple small projects, or it could be just one huge project that addresses this corridor between three eighty-six and one oh nine. You know, if they, if they were to move stuff forward, it would take years really before we could see actual construction, and maybe even years before we see any right-of-way acquisition because it will take TDOT a long time to get funds programmed.
Yeah, and I don't think TDOT will interface with the developer on this.
Not initially.
Not in this phase at all.
Not, not at this point in time. The only time that they would begin conversations with the developer is when they're at a point where they're going to acquire right-of-way. So we're TDOT's partner in this, and we would want to try to create as little conflict as we can or prevent conflict from happening if we can so that when the improvements can be funded by TDOT, that they're not having to, you know, uproot fifty citizens or, you know, things, things like that. So, you know, for us to rezone a property, I mean, a good example might be like the Twin Eagle subdivision where we talked about the extension of Albert Gallatin Avenue through that area where the city moved ahead and allowed development to happen. And so if TDOT were interested in, in an alternative that is being studied in this, this feasibility study, then it means that TDOT would have to acquire fifteen, twenty houses. And so we, we kind of, we limit what it is that TDOT can do really because now the right-of-way acquisition gets really where there's no, no cost benefit ratio that makes sense.
Makes it less feasible.
Correct. That's exactly, and these, that's what this is called, is a feasibility study. So they're looking at those things now. You know, they're looking at whether or not it is feasible, and because there are fifteen, twenty houses in that path, they're extremely likely to say that something like that is unfeasible. So if we were to allow, you know, development to occur, you know, along, you know, the Long Hollow Pike section between three eighty-six and one oh nine, let's say that houses line to that, and, you know, now there's, to widen that, now you're talking about purchasing a hundred homes to make that section wider. Now you're talking about that being unfeasible. And so you're looking at a whole new alignment for new bypass, if that makes sense. So we're trying to be, you know, partners with TDOT, and as they perform their studies and they're looking out twenty-five years into the future, can we preserve those areas so that it's not going to put them in a position where it's just unfeasible for them to move ahead with, you know, numbers have been thrown around already with projects that would be in the range of a hundred million dollars to make, make changes and make this corridor something that would be viable twenty-five, thirty years from now.
Our only option, you know, for...
It's already crowded.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Anything further for you all?
I guess I got a question for Mr. McCord. Is he here? Bill, if this is not approved as presented, can he build on this property right now?
They would be allowed to build. They would need to go through the site plan review process because it's on CS. So it'd be a site plan, it'd be reviewed by the planning commission, but they would be, provided that they provided a plan to us that met all the requirements of CS zoning, they would be allowed to develop the property for commercial purposes.
With the same number of homes?
They wouldn't be building homes on there. It'd be some sort of commercial activity that's allowed to CS.
Even with their no longer, I mean, it's back to what we talked about before. I mean, when they lost access to the property, they should have...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if you turn this down, can they go back and can they still put something on that property that's going to prevent us from using it for roadway? And I think we need a roadway through there. I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, if we turn this townhome development down, can they still build on that property?
But it would depend on the planning commission approving it. Is that right?
Well, that's true. The planning commission would most likely have to approve a plan depending on how intensive the plan was. Now, if they were, the applicant were to submit a plan that complied with the design standards of our code.
That's what I'm talking about.
Would have to, well, I suppose they could deny it, but that might create some legal issues for the city.
And that's my concern. I mean, I have the same concern as the mayor and everybody else on this piece of property because it is a very important corridor. However, I'm just, you know, wanting to be sure everybody understands, just because we turn this down, doesn't mean that he can't go put commercial buildings on this property because he can. However, I'm just, you know, wanting to be sure everybody understands, just because we turn this down doesn't mean that he can't go put commercial buildings on this property because he can. And I don't think he would. I, I don't, I hope the developer wouldn't do that. But I'm just, I just want everybody to understand that he can still build on that property, so.
One else?
This went through planning commission, right, unanimously?
Yes, it did. No, well, it was not unanimous, but it, it was approved.
Their, their concerns were different on the planning commission because the red wasn't discussed so much, was it?
I'm sorry.
I said that TDOT's study was not discussed so much at the planning commission, was it?
It was mentioned, but essentially it was the same situation as Nick described. It was a draft plan that didn't show, at least the draft plan doesn't show any impact to the property.
Well, I think it's. I'll do again.
I think what Nick was saying is that, if I'm not mistaken, is that he will have some kind of study by next week? Is that what he said?
No.
Nick? They were doing a study or something, right? Is that what you said?
No, no, the, the developer's traffic study. He has it, but he's not reviewing it yet. And so he would may have, have more information.
Do you feel more comfortable if we waited?
It's really premature on the preliminary master development plan.
Yeah, what I ask for them to, to do is to, to take into consideration what's shown in our major thoroughfare plan, which our major thoroughfare plan shows improvements to that interchange. So I don't know how they addressed it. And maybe I'll have information that says that, that they would reserve that area. I, I don't know if that's what they're planning to do or not. But I, I asked them to include that. It, it is a project that's in our major thoroughfare plan, so they should be paying attention to it and accommodating it.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
Answer my questions.
Have a motion a second, so I'm going to ask the all in favor of second reading on ordinance 02107-44, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
I think I'm counting five yeses, two nos. Is that correct? Any, any abstentions? Okay, five. Four, two against. Councilwoman George and Councilwoman Love against, so it does pass second reading. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 02108-48, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin rezoning approximately 2.74 plus or minus acres from the R40 low-density residential zoning district to the R15 medium-density residential zoning district, located east of Airport Road, north of East Broadway. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for us effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love. Second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02108-48. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Three is second reading on ordinance 02108-50. Councilman Hayes.
This is second reading, an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Villas on the Greens, phases one and two, on a 13.06 acre lot located south of Nashville Pike, north of Noah Lane and west of Plantation Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes. Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02108-50. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance 02109-51. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance appropriating funds for the completion of sidewalk improvements at Panera Bread. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Fan. I'm sorry, I have a critter that has just joined in here. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, this is second reading on ordinance 02109-51. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, second reading passes unanimously. Item number five is second reading on ordinance 02109-52. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $173,233 for the purchase of a 2022 roll-off truck for recycling. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell. Second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to ask something. Richard, can you tell me what was Mr. DeBoer talking about? A, a tag axle?
Yes, sir. He, he wanted us to get a, a single axle with a drop axle. You could drop it on the way to Nashville, pull it back up on the way back empty.
More money?
I didn't even price it. Talking to the sales rep and vehicle maintenance supervisor, didn't even want to go with that option. With the amount of weight we're having to haul and you're running into issues with your dropping that, that axle up and down, we've just got to straight tandem so that both axes will always be down. Just, there's, it was not recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you. So had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02109-52. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, indicate by saying no. It is passed unanimously on second reading. Item number five is second reading on ordinance 02109-53. Councilman Fan.
Second reading on ordinance appropriating funds for 2021, 2022 carryover capital projects. I so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan. Second by Councilman Hayes. Any questions, discussion? Did you want to say something? Ms. Nichols just pushed her chair back.
In the pocket of your agenda, there should be a requested amendment to this ordinance for the additional dollars and change for concrete work.
Thank you. Mine was hidden behind a road closure form. So it's just adding the additional $28,110 for the concrete repairs at Fire Hall 3.
To that.
Motion to amend.
A motion, a motion to amend by Councilman Hayes. Second on the amendment by Councilman Overton. Any discussion on the amendment? Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of voting for the amendment, say aye. Opposed, say no. Amendment passes. We're back on the original motion. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02109-53. As amended, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Second reading passes unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 02109-54. Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from business donation. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman George. Second by Councilwoman Love. And these are dollars allocated for our codes department and our engineering department from the donation that was done from Facebook to support our development services. Any discussion? All right, second reading on ordinance 02109-54. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number eight is first reading on ordinance 02109-55. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on the ordinance appropriating $427,860 TDEC VW Diesel Settlement Environmental Mitigation Trust large truck grant for large truck replacement program. I so move.
Second.
By Councilman Alexander. Second by Council, Vice Mayor Fennell. Any questions? It's a very good thing. All in favor of first reading on ordinance 02109-55, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item number nine is first reading on ordinance 02109-56. Also an exciting thing. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating $999,015.60 of TDOT multimodal access grant for Ball State Gap Trail Phase One project. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hayes. Second by Councilman Fan. Questions? Celebration? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02109-56. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed on first reading. Item number 10 is first reading on ordinance 02109-57. And we just keep rolling with money. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first reading on ordinance appropriating $1,565,640 TDOT congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program grant for ITS Phase Two project. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Love. A second by Councilwoman George. Is that right? Opening the floor for any questions or discussion. So excited that it's Phase Two, especially since we're finally about to start on Phase One. All right, it's first reading on, um, ordinance 02109-57. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 02109-58. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance, City of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Article II, Language and Definitions of Article 15, Administration and Enforcement of Temporary Use and occupancy Permits, authorizing revisions to be made to the, to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflict of ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Alexander. Opening the floor for discussion.
Something about the permit fees.
Pardon me?
How much are the permit fees are going to be?
I don't remember. Ms. Homicoli, do you remember? Mr. McCord, thank you. He's coming for it already.
Mr. McCord, city planner. The permit fees on this one remain the same. They're $50 for temporary use permits. And as you recall, you adopted recently an ordinance that separates the temporary use permits from the food truck ordinance. The food truck has a separate fee and is not included in the temporary use permit fee, meaning there's no double charge, for example. There is a fee on the next item that we would want to discuss also.
Mr. McCord, did we specify how long this thing is? Did you still say it's six months? Is that what this is?
Yeah, it's six months, and that doesn't change. For, now, there are certain particular uses, and I described last two weeks ago, that don't have that liberal of a timeframe for their operation. So that, like, circuses and things like that, carnivals, they have a shorter timeframe. Very specific in the ordinance, and that, that's pretty much exactly how it is now. So we're not changing those.
I could be. I'm going to ask you the next one, too.
That means don't go far. You say you had questions on the next one, too, so I was just saying, don't go far. Council, further discussion, questions, debate? Okay, this is item 11. It's first reading on ordinance 02109-58. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes first reading unanimously. Item 12 is first reading on ordinance 02109-59. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance, City of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, Article II, Language and Definitions, Article III, Use Classifications, Article VI, Provisions in Residential Districts, Article VII, Provisions in Mixed Use Districts, Article VIII, Provisions in Commercial Districts, Article XI, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Article XII, Supplemental Districts and Regulations for Designated Section 12.102 Short-Term Rental Units, and Article XV, Administration and Enforcement of the Gallatin Zoning Ordinance, Refilling Conflict of Ordinance, Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date. I so move.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Alexander. Floor for questions.
Mr. McCord, tell us about the fee on this one.
Okay, this, this ordinance doesn't include a, a short-term rental permit fee. Most communities that have a short-term rental ordinance do have a fee. And I think the city attorney may have provided a listing of the fees from the other cities that have, that were surveyed that have a short-term rental fee. Couple of weeks ago, I had mentioned that we were probably going to consider an ordinance that amends the hotel motel tax or adds to it, a similar one for short-term rentals. I was, I've since been told by the city attorney's office that we don't need to do that, that the current ordinance is effective for these types of uses as well. So that fee for hotel motel tax is $25. So the fees from some of the other cities that were surveyed range anywhere from a high of $313 to a low of $15.
It's my recommendation that you amend this ordinance to include the fee within this ordinance, rather than a separate ordinance, so that when someone's looking for it, it's all in one ordinance.
And, and we can bring the amended ordinance with an additional section to address the fee at the next.
Go ahead and amend tonight if you determine what, what you want your fee to be.
Make an amendment. Any suggestions on what we think it should be?
The amount of time that it'll take us to, to review this is probably more similar to a temporary use permit type of review. So I think $50 is certainly an appropriate fee for us to apply for short-term rentals. And that could be adjusted if you want to where, when they renew it each year, it could be less for renewal fee. And some cities have that option. So the, the initial, uh, short-term renewal, uh, rental fee is a little higher than the renewal fee.
I'll make an amendment to, to adjust it to $50 and then the ability to, to look at that fee if we need to adjust it at a later time.
I, I kind of like what he's, what he suggested in that you do, say, an initial $50 fee, and then your renewal could be, say, $25 or something like that. But that's up to you all.
Let's put that in form of a motion.
My second.
Have a motion by Vice, Vice Mayor Fennell to have the permit fee set at $50 with a renew, and that's the first time. And then the renewal would be $25. Second was made by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion on this amendment? Okay, let's vote on this amendment. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, amendment passes unanimously, taking us back to the initial motion. Any further discussion? Are you okay to go ahead and vote? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02109-59. As amended, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously on first reading. Item number 13 is first reading on ordinance 02109-60. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating insurance recoveries in the amount of $4,244.04 for repair of damages to pedestrian bridge. I so move.
Second. By Councilwoman George. Nigga, second by Councilwoman Love. I think that bridge was over there by you. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02109-60. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass first reading unanimously. Item number 14 is first reading on ordinance 02109-61. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Seven, Property Maintenance Standards, and I do, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan. Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Do you all want to, want to hear from Chief Bandy or?
We can do that.
Or, or Ms. Homicoli. How about that?
What would you like to hear about?
We asked.
Question, I'm happy to answer it.
Who wanted to hear about it?
Okay, well, move along if you don't. All right.
I, I mean, do you want to know what, what, why we're doing this? I can give you a little bit of a history.
I was just thinking it would be helpful for the public since it's related to property maintenance, and we're getting so many calls and inquiries lately. Sorry.
So currently, we have a property maintenance officer who's in our police department. And our property maintenance officer goes out and tries to get our city cleaned up. Currently, all that we are allowed to do is to cite them to city court with a $50 fine. And that really has no teeth. And we are trying to enact this ordinance so that we have an appeals board, so that we don't have to bring some of these as a dangerous building because they're not structurally unsound. They're just uninhabitable homes because they may not have water or electricity or they are so dirty that they cannot be lived in, other issues of that nature. And we're setting up this appeals board so that any issue that the property maintenance officer determines has a right to appeal so that we can get those houses condemned a little quicker and have more teeth and get our city cleaned up.
I think that's fair and good.
I think it's a very good direction.
And we will be bringing a resolution, next week's work session, naming. next week's work session, naming people to be on that board.
We have had some situations that we just don't have mechanisms by which to make change. And it's really upsetting in the neighbors, and really is a terrible living situation for the people there. So, that's why we're going that direction. So, thank you. I just thought that would be informative for everyone. So, any further questions? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02109-61. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number 15 is Resolution R2109-60. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is Resolution Accepting Public Improvements Excluding Sidewalks by the City of Galton, Tennessee for Woods Common, Section 1. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2109-60. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Resolution R2109-61. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is Resolution Accepting Public Improvements by the City of Galton for Carrollton Phase 3B. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions, discussion? This is Resolution R2109-61. In favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 17 is Resolution R2109-62. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is Resolution Accepting Public Improvements Excluding Sidewalks by the City of Galton for the Drive-In Phase 1 and 2. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is Resolution R2109-62. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item number 18 is Resolution R2109-63. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Approving Reclassification of City Survey responsibilities. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? And this is Resolution R2109-63. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 19 is Resolution R2109-64. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Galton City Council naming a new roadway as West Albert-Gallatin Avenue and renaming a section of Northwater Avenue as West Albert-Gallatin Avenue and renaming Albert-Gallatin Avenue as East Albert-Gallatin Avenue. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion?
That's very confusing. I think the public might want to know what we're doing, so.
Okay, well, Albert-Gallatin is the road that exists currently, and that's the road from 31 over to Northwater. And then Northwater, which starts over on Broadway, actually curves to the left, I like to say, over the catfish pond as a point that we all know. It curves to the left there. And then the new road that we're building, which has been called the Albert-Gallatin Extension or the Hatton Track Extension, is going to now become the new Albert-Gallatin. And so, the choice was made by this council to tie the road together all with one name, although certainly those in the middle on the Northwater part want to retain their addresses. I think everyone's decided that that's not what they want to do. So, the existing part of Albert-Gallatin, the part between 31 and Northwater, is going to become East Albert-Gallatin Avenue. And then the Northwater section and the new section is going to become West.
Okay.
But, but for the, from All-Access Coach up to the red light, it's not changing, correct?
Right, that's Northwater.
That's what everybody's calling it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's Northwater.
Everybody understands that that part of Northwater is not changing.
And really, I'll tell you another way that would be easier to explain it probably than what I just went through, is from the red light, where the cemetery is, on Highway 31, all the way to Long Hollow is going to be Albert-Gallatin Road, in essence. That's a more simple definition, isn't it?
Do that again, please.
Not Long Hollow, bypass, sorry. Messed that up. Had good intentions. From 31 to 109, to the bypass, yep. Will all be Albert-Gallatin.
But, but from the red light back to All-Access Coach is to Broadway, it's not going to change at all.
I understand that. I was out there today, and I did have a citizen ask me two questions. One is the date of completion. I mean, I can see a lot of progress in that area. Another question is the old bridge it was going over, will that old bridge be tore down? And they're going to, or they're just combining it into one wide bridge.
Mr. Tittle, you want to jump in here? I don't know exactly. I haven't gotten a status update on completion. He hates this.
So, the current contract with change orders included is really not viable right now. Our contractor is behind. So, I'm afraid to give you a date on when this project's going to be completed. It was supposed to be completed this summer. And we had a lot of complications dealing with CSX. And that's pushed a lot of things back. And then there's been other issues with our contractor managing their subs well. And so, we're having a lot of difficult conversations with our contractor. And I don't want to throw out any dates at this point in time.
Okay, what about the bridge?
Yes, the old bridge will come down. As a matter of fact, it should come down pretty soon. They just got approval from CSX on the demolition of the old bridge. But we've got to move, we're going to move traffic over to the section, the new, a new section of the bridge, so that the old bridge can then be torn down. And then they'll complete the full width of the new bridge. So, in other words, they've built half of the bridge, and they're going to shift traffic to that new half on the north side of Northwater Avenue. And then, once traffic's been shifted there, they can then demo the old bridge and build the other half of the new bridge.
Okay.
And it's sad, because we were on such a positive trajectory there for a little while. And then it just fell.
We had high hopes, yeah. And as far as hopes go, we do hope to see this roadway functional, minus the bridge piece, by the end of the year. That's what we're shooting for and really pushing hard for. So, all the roadway out to 109 would be constructed, complete, and open. But we would have still a bottleneck on that existing section of Northwater Avenue, the bridge over the railroad. So, it would neck back down at that point. Hopefully, it doesn't cause too many traffic issues. We don't think it will. We think it will function okay for this time. And then, what would happen is that construction would be ongoing, and they would finish that up and get it open in the spring.
I complain to you just at the red light.
And that's what we're really pushing hard for is to get really every, we want the contractor to complete the project minus the bridge. We understand the bridge is a huge issue, but we want to get that traffic signal done is really been our priority in pushing. And we've thrown out some, what's called liquidated damages. We've thrown that idea out to the contractor. We don't, we don't want to go there, because that usually ends up with attorneys dealing with that after the project's complete. And nobody wins in that situation. So, we're doing our best to move it forward without making everyone else's life difficult, so.
Thank you, New.
Ready to vote on Resolution R2109-64? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda. It brings us now to other business. I do have a application to close the street. This is for the cemetery tour that I mentioned earlier in the meeting. It happens on the 2nd of October. They'd like to close the road from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And they closed Cemetery Avenue from West Smith to West Winchester. And as a reminder, this is the fundraiser for the Southern County Museum. Do you have all the city signatures? And I believe we should be fine with it.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Application to close the street is approved. And I think that is all I have under other business. I would ask if anyone else on this council has any other business this evening. Excellent. Seeing none, we're going to move now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and speak to anything that's not on the agenda. Again, we ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Michelle DuVontz, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to bring another update about the intersection that I told you about two weeks ago with, at Harris Lane in Long Hollow Pike. It's right there by my house. The pylon's been fixed, but now the guardrail's been knocked down again. So, I don't know how many times that, in the last two years, that that guardrail's been down, maybe six times. And that really means that there's a problem there. And Vice Mayor Fennell, I need your help, because you know that that is a problem. And we would, we need a sign at the other end of the road where the big trucks are entering, something. Because a sign is cheaper than replacing the guardrail continuously. So, that intersection's a big problem. We've been talking about it for more than two years. You need to drive out there and look at it. It's a mess. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on non-agenda-related items?
Show the Board, 1007 Hart Street, Galton, Tennessee. I rise tonight at this juncture in our meeting because I need some information. And also, an apology to this august board. And the apology goes like this. I did not know, until recently, that the deal with regard to the county and Hendersonville with regard to the trash deal was such that we got a discount because we got in that fight, that group. In other words, if we go in and put our money into this project and so forth, that we get a special deal with regard to the trash cost for our city. That makes a lot of difference as far as making recommendations of this august body, because we did not know that. I did not know that. So, we need to share that with the folks, because I've been following this thing for 18 years, over 10 years, right, Jimmy?
Sure.
All right? And we did not know about this. And what we need to do is have it out there for the public to see that this is what we're doing. And it's about time for me to haul my trash off, to be quite brutally frank about it. And I want to know how much discount I get when I go across the scales out there. So, with this being said, I'm kind of interested in finding out what the deal is here. So, with that being said, that's the first issue that we need to deal with. And I'd like to know how much discount we get when I take my trash across that scale. Now, here's another catch on that, I would say. And that is, who are you going to designate as people that can get that discount? Because if you all do it some way, the discount would be on our trash trucks that goes across the scale. But that's not right for me, who hauls my own trash. Because I want to have my trash weighed, okay? And when I get weighed out there, it's going to cost me a whole lot less. In other words, from July 1 until 1st October, that is almost a quarter. And I would say, just right offhand, because we've done this before, and see, that's another catch, too. Because we've done this before, and we didn't got, we did not get, we did not get the discount. Come on, Craig. Smile a little bit for us.
Lost me. I'm on the Resource Authority Board. You lost me.
Now, Galton gets discount on their, on the trash collection. That's right.
You see, you've come to the city of Hendersonville, they come. But the county doesn't.
Well, now, Hendersonville, I talked, I talked.
As an individual, do not get a discount.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Because I shouldn't get a discount, because I live in Galton.
It's not, no, no, no. It's just the city of Galton trash picking.
Need to go address the Resource Authority Board.
That'd be a good place for you.
You need to come to our board if you want to do that.
Like that battle.
Well, you can't catch them. They hit the door quicker than you do, coming here.
You're getting a, you're getting a, you're getting a bigger discount anyway by not feeding the trash.
No, it's, no, it's not a bigger discount for me.
Hey, this is public.
It's not, yes, ma'am, I understand about that. We're having a nice conversation. I like good conversation.
Have a minute left.
Wait a minute. You've got more to it than this, too. Okay? Because we've got more things to do besides just what I'm talking about here. So, anyway, we'll check on that, Mr. Hayes. We'll follow up on that.